Over here, we're capping it at 10:00 tonight.
Do you have to be a Cave Creek resident?
No.
No, you don't have to be a Cave Creek resident. Just fill out the form, fill out your address, and what your issue is about.
And when you fill that out, give it to the clerk, please.
I'm over here, sir, to the clerk, right here. So, you're so cute. Hi, Dad. Do we have more chairs? Do we have any more chairs that we can bring in?
No.
Sure.
I don't want to go over the stuff that's going on with the policies.
Yeah, we can pull this table up. Yes, fill it out, and then once you're done, bring it to the clerk.
I know.
Oh.
Seven o'clock. I want to welcome everyone to the Monday, July 16th, 2018, regular town council meeting, County of Cave Creek, Arizona, and at this point in time, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Senator Phan, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, thank you, Mayor.
You all please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public announcements, I don't really have any. Anybody else?
Mine is more an update with the League, but given where we're at, I'll do that next time.
Okay, so here we go. Call to the public for stuff unrelated to agendized items. Do we have some?
Maybe we repeat that.
It said, "Call to the public for non-agendized items."
Jane Rhodes, please state your name and address for the record.
We got her all the way in the back.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Jane Rhodes, 39616 North 26th Street, and that's Cave Creek. I just wanted to say, I'm a little confused about whether the council had, was involved in not having fireworks this year, or that just didn't happen for some retail reason. But if you were involved, I just wanted to thank you very much. Every year since we moved here in 2005, I've never understood why a rural community in the middle of a desert, in fact, that was the year that we saw flames on the hills, and I thought we had left fire to move here. Every year, I've worried that we're having fireworks in the height of fire season, and of course, living around hauled water, that's an extra worry, wondering how we'd ever put it out. So, if you were involved in that, thank you, thank you, thank you. Really appreciate it.
Are there any more?
Kathy Latham, please state your name and address for the record.
All right, I'll take the opportunity. Hi, my name's Kathy Latham. I live at 5772 East Ironwood Bluff, the other side of town for you other people's what we look like. I just wanted to say, I'm an avid supporter, what? I'm an avid supporter of group homes and for the American Disability Act. I have a brother who lives in a group home, who's in his 50s. He's been in, he's needed supervised living since he was 20, so it is a requirement. I have a sister-in-law that's Korean. I have an uncle that's a minority. So, the Fair Housing Act and the American Disability Act is very, very important to me. So, I'm wearing red tonight to say, "Stop. Stop the hurtful comments." I don't think you understand how hurtful it is hearing talk around town, having somebody say, "Well, at least they're not psych patients. You know, they're, they'll be a little more stable, they'll be a little more normal." You know, how does that make you feel when you have a family member that is suffering from something, or to say, you know, "Well, you're not heroin addicts or meth addicts, they're just, you know, they're alcoholics, and hey, they're CEOs, so they're a better class of people." So, I, please, stop. Don't, don't look at it that way. That's not the way to look at it. It is so hurtful. I cannot tell you how it makes you feel. And I think Mr. Preger has been so magnanimous through the Planning Commission meetings with the hurtful comments that were said, and I do apologize. I think, I think it's terrible. On the other hand, I want to say, as council reviews this, if you're looking at any of the demographics because they're a CEO, or because it's only alcohol and prescription drugs, then shame on you, because that's what the Fair Housing Act and the ADA is all about, is it's equal for everyone. Now, effectively, we are creating a new ordinance, and I believe Mr. Preger's lawyer mentioned that, the Planning Commission meeting, because we have something generic written right now that says "group home." So, whatever you approve fundamentally becomes a new ordinance, because we need an ordinance for which, you know, the Planning Commission can then act on. And I think it's also risky to think that we want to pass something or approve something with certain characteristics, and then turn around and think we're going to write another ordinance that's more restrictive, because if anything is a risk for a lawsuit, is when you refine something to make it more restrictive, that looks like we are trying to keep someone with a disability out. The one thing that, that I wanted to point out is, we've looked, we've looked at fair housing and the American Disability Act, but the other thing that comes into play is communal living. In 1926 is when the government said the communities have the right to set ordinances for the health, welfare, and safety of their environment. And then it was in 1968, well, actually, after World War II and industrial revolution started, and all the neighborhoods, subdivisions popped up, that communities tried to enact acts that would keep minorities out, like my sister-in-law or others. And so, coincidentally, one week after Martin Luther King was assassinated is when the Fair Housing Act got passed, that says communities cannot do that. They cannot limit people because of their race, or because of the color of their skin, or their beliefs, or their religion. And so, we kind of moved along and said, "Families are families." Well, then the question came, it wasn't really until 19, late 60s, when Charles Manson's...
Three minutes.
That was three minutes?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to limit it, but basically, my point is, is I think that we have always implemented our ordinances, whether it's for the bed and breakfast, for short-term occupancy, for whatever we want to increase, if we want to increase density. And so, I think that we should be concerned about creating any ordinances that are going to undo any of the ordinances that already exist.
Thank you. We somehow managed to get one that's agendized, so we really got you ahead of the, ahead of the curve there, so. Any more that are not, not pursuant to item number three or related?
Oh, so I was on the wrong agenda item?
Yeah.
I'll come back to it.
I don't think that's going to happen. Council requests for future agenda items. Seeing and hearing nothing, Town Manager report?
I was wondering, are we going to have either an executive session or a public session on Carefree Council discussion? Carefree Council discussion.
We can talk, well, we'll schedule something on that.
I thought we were going to have one, so.
Okay. I hadn't, hadn't heard that, but we don't have a problem with it. All right, Town Manager?
That's the advanced agenda.
No, actually, Town Manager, I had already talked to her about it, and we didn't see it.
Mayor, Members of Council, the elections are upon us, and the early voting starts on August 1st. And for council and for voters' information, the town contracts with Maricopa County Elections for election services, and they have actually changed their process somewhat, and it's a little different than what we have been used to in Cave Creek, so I thought I would just highlight that. They're having what they call ballot centers now, not early voting locations. They're calling them ballot centers. And ballot centers, there are some that open 27 days prior to the election day. And then they are having 10, they're having mega sites, they call them, that open up 10 days prior to the election day. Election day is August 28th, it's a Tuesday. The polls open from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. For those folks that have registered with Maricopa County Elections for early ballots, you can have your ballot mailed to you. Many people are on the automatic early ballot list. If you receive the list, or if you receive the ballot in the mail, if you're on that list, you will receive your ballot sometime after August 1st. If you don't receive your ballot in the mail for whatever reason, you have the right to go to a ballot center, which has been known as an early voting site, to cast another ballot. The first ballot in locks out any other ballot. You do have the opportunity, if you make errors or don't receive your ballot, to, for three tries. And if you come into a ballot center, early voting site, once you vote in person, you can't take that with you, you'll be able to vote there in person. The town will only, the town of Cave Creek will only have early voting the week prior. There, the county is running these, they're staffing the sites. We were told today that the Cave Creek Ballot Center will be open Wednesday and Thursday, the week before election day, and then again on election day from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. If you've received a ballot in the mail, you come in, you don't wait in line during, for the poll that day, you simply come in and drop that in the box. For information on all of the ballot centers in Maricopa County, so if you work in another jurisdiction, and it's more convenient for you to go somewhere else to vote early at a ballot center, that list will be on the Maricopa County website by August 1st or before, if they confirm all of the locations. That will be on their website that they've developed, maricopa.vote. That's all you have to type in and go look for the ballot centers, there will be a list. The town will be on the list for the Wednesday and Thursday prior to the election day of August 28th and on election 28th. If you want to drop off your ballot and just put it in the box early on Wednesday or Thursday prior to election day, you can do that here in the Cave Creek Council chambers. That's all I have for right now.
All right. Moving right along to the consent agenda, approval of April 16th, regular council meeting minutes, approval of May 7th, 2018, regular council meeting minutes, approval of May 21st, 2018, regular council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? As clear as heaven. General Agenda Item Number One, presentation by and discussion with...
Mayor, would you consider moving Agenda Item Number Three up to one since everybody that's here is for that purpose?
We're going to get to it?
Mr. Mayor, if I could say, Mr. Lewis is unable to attend, so there will be no presentation by Mr. Lewis. He emailed late today and said he had another conflicting meeting that he had to go out of town.
Okay.
Senator Phan is here. I don't know how long the talk is, but we would get right to Item Three if Senator Phan is sure.
Item Three becomes Item Two. So, Senator Phan, let's see, it was, that was presentation discussion with Senator Karen Phan and the Events and Activities for District One of Arizona. If you would like to, you can come up here and take my chair, I'll let you have the middle up here, you can, you can, you can remember what it was like to be in the hot seat.
That was a long time ago.
Instead of one, a 30.
I forgot, this is how you guys do it here. It makes me feel so welcome. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for having me, council members. Many of you know me, have known me for years. Some of you, you haven't met me yet. My name is Karen Phan, and I'm currently your Senator for District One. If you don't know how big District One is, it's about 8,000 square miles, and so that includes Cave Creek, Carefree, a little bit of North Phoenix, Anthem, New River, Black Canyon City, Cortez Junction, into the Prescott area, up to Ash Fork, over to Seligman, and down to Wickenberg, and then back across. So, that's how big our district is that we all are part of, so it takes a lot. I served six years over in the House before I went over into the Senate. I'm in my first term in the Senate. And then prior to that, I actually was the mayor of Chino Valley for three terms, and I was the Vice Mayor and Councilwoman for City of Prescott. So, local control and municipalities are very, very dear to my heart. That's one thing that I fight for all the time, is making sure that we have local control, that we have the ability to be able to make our decisions here on a local level, more so than on the state level. Some things we have to take care of there, but let's try and keep the voice with the people, is the way it should be. So, I also wanted to very quickly introduce, Jody Rooney came down also. She is running for the House, and if you haven't had a chance to meet her, please do so. She recently retired from ADOT. I had hired her. When I was Chair of the CYMPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, when we started that, we went out for a nationwide search to hire somebody to come in and start our MPO in all things transportation, and Jody was the lucky winner and moved out, and so I've known her since the day she came out here. So, anyway, if you haven't had a chance to meet her, please do. I wanted to mention briefly about what happened in session this year. Our, this year, we have a $10.4 billion budget. It's rather large, and a lot of that had to do with the Red for Ed. We had our budget about 80% complete, and I'm glad to say that we were able to restore a lot of our herd funds for our cities and towns and counties. We were able to restore a lot of our monies to the counties that had to do with juvenile justice funds. We, but we also put in, well, over the next three years, we'll put in $650 million into the K-12 education and teachers raises. There will be another $350 million that will go to classroom assistance, which is for the support of the classroom and the staff there. So, we put in a lot of money. JTAD received another chunk of money, another $1.8 million. So, this year, it was all about education, and it's not over yet, as you know. It's still going to be issues on the ballot. But we were able to, not only do we have a structurally balanced budget, but because the economy is going so well right now, we're about $263 million to the good right now, more than we expected. So, this is what's given us that extra revenue to be able to put back into those, those sort of things. We also were able to put in $2.9 million more into the Border Strike Force to help strengthen the, the border, and let's try and stop those drugs and illegal activities that are coming over. So, that's a big priority for many of us. As I said, local control is huge for me. I fight every year for state shared revenues. I'm saying this more for the council's benefit. If you guys don't know what I'm talking about, that's what really funds municipalities in our government. That's a lot of it. So, it's always a challenge to be able to fight for your taxpayer dollars to come back in your local jurisdictions. Water issues. I've been working on water issues for about 30 years. Coming from the, and Alan's nodding his head over there, he knows this, coming from the Prescott area, grew up there, moved there when I was four, we have had water issues up there a long, long time, working with the Big Chino and the Little Chino Aquifer. I have sponsored many bills regarding rainwater harvesting, ways to be able to import waters from the Big Chino while still protecting the Verde River, which is hugely important. So, now that this is all in our district here, I'm working very closely with New River, and actually, the mayor and I have had some conversations already, working with ADWR to see what we can do to help resolve some of the water issues that we're finding in Anthem and Cave Creek and New River area, because we are facing some serious, not only drought conditions, but this is a very tough area now for getting water anyway. So, we're going to keep working on that. It's important to me, and I just want to make sure you guys know that you have a voice in the, in the Senate. I serve on the Ag and Water Committees' half from day one, so not only do I deal with agriculture issues, I deal with water issues. I've also been Chair of the Transportation Committee. I own a highway construction company, is my real trade, so consequently, I'm big into highway transportation in the I-17 corridor in particular, so that's a big, another big issue there. And then the other thing is the reduction of government and bureaucracy. I absolutely hate it, so anything and everything we can do, again, to make sure that we keep it on a local level with as least amount of bureaucracy and regulation, I'm all for that. So, I hope you guys are too. So, with that, I, please, you can get ahold of me anytime. I will be at the League Conference again this year, my 16th one, so I hope you guys are going to be there, because I will spend some time. In the meantime, is there any questions that anybody has of me before I give the mayor his seat back again? No?
Do you have some cards to pass out?
I, I can give you a business card, yes. Okay?
I have a comment.
Okay.
With no disrespect to our mayor, the mayor's chair has never looked so good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Somehow, I think I was insulted there, but I'm not sure how it is. I'm welcome to the, to the, to the race. Obviously, we're not going to do Agenda Item Number Two, so we're going to move on to what I'm assuming everybody's in here for. I got to turn pages to read it. Council discussion, possible approval of case number SU-18-01, Soberman's Estate, a special use to allow a group home for a proposed state licensed behavioral health residential facility subject to conditions. Mr. Cordwell?
Mayor, Members of Council, Planning Commission recommended by a five to nothing vote to approve this case to the council with a number of conditions, which you've seen in your staff report. I don't know how much you want me to go over that, but the applicant is here with his attorney. The town attorney had executive sessions with the council and the Planning Commission on that day when the commission took its recommending action. The case is for a sober living home. The process is through a special use permit in our ordinance for a group home. It's fairly vague. I believe we need to amend our ordinances, but this is what we have at this moment. I have actually contacted a consultant who helped Prescott and has worked with Scott Stale and Phoenix. He's out of state, and he's responded to me, forwarded it to the Town Manager for what his proposal is, so. Are there any questions?
I guess, I guess we're in questions here. Short presentation.
There's a lot of people here, it's getting warm, so.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking there are a lot of people in here going to want to tell us. Any questions from council? Wow. I don't know that I've ever seen this happen.
I'd just like to say, the reason there's probably no questions, I've never seen such a litigious, voluminous amount of information regarding a subject, which I personally have read and made many phone calls, so I believe just about every question I had was answered in all the correspondence, especially the Department of Justice and Fair Housing Authority Joint Memorandum dated November of 16. It's all quite informative, quite helpful, and again, I think everything has been brought on the table and addressed, and that's why I have no questions.
All right.
Mayor, will the applicant be making a presentation?
Yes.
I would say that's the next step, Councilwoman.
You mean right now, before everybody comes and yells at us?
You got it.
That's, that's a good idea. I'm ready. I think the room's ready.
We should officially open the hearing.
Oh, okay, I'm officially opening the hearing then.
Oh, yes, you can, you can go first.
Mayor Bunch, Vice Mayor Silva, Councilwoman Clancy, Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Elrod, and Councilwoman Wright, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. 14 weeks ago, on April 9th, I submitted my special use application to the staff. On May 17th, I had the privilege of addressing the Honorable Chairman Varys and members of his Planning Commission. During this May 17th hearing, I outlined that over 400 Americans die every day in our country from the disease of alcoholism and opioid overdose. During this May 17th hearing, my goal was to address the new concerns that I learned of after I hosted a neighborhood meeting in this room and mailed a letter, which is Exhibit E to the neighbors. After a delay, the legal question was addressed in this room on June 7th. With a town lawyer present at this June 7th hearing, the commission voted unanimously in favor of Soberman's Estate. Opening this group home is a calling and passion, because A, I've been in recovery from alcoholism and actively involved in the Cave Creek Recovery Community for over 20 years now. I lost my 49-year-old brother Jeff in 2010 to an accidental opioid overdose. And C, shortly after that, I lost my best, my best friend Jerry, who was a local doctor, to the disease of alcoholism. Helping men recover from alcoholism and addiction is a gift that God has granted me and is a calling that I cannot give up. I counsel addicts and alcoholics that are in jails and institutions, and I will continue to do so. Additionally, I have professional friends in group homes today, where they are the only alcoholic professional in their group home. These Florida Model Group Home Counseling Sessions are not effective for my friends that are professionals, as they are not in an appropriate peer group. Soberman's Estate is a much-needed group home designed for professionals. The staff and Planning Commission have done an outstanding job of setting the bar extremely high. I have voluntarily added a dozen restrictions to my special use application, Exhibit J, and I've been searching for an estate for 18 months, and I finally, I found, excuse me, I finally found one that has no immediate neighbors to the north, south, or east. It's a poster over there that you can look at at your convenience, and an estate where the residents will not have to pass another home after turning north on 32nd Street from Carefree Highway. The residents seek private... The residents seek privacy. They are high-profile professionals that seek a low-profile setting. The drive into Soberman's Estate from Carefree Highway begins the journey of recovery in the spirit of the desert. I'm respectfully requesting and highly recommending your unanimous approval of this application. I now gratefully turn the presentation over to my attorney, Ms. Heather Dukes.
Good evening, Mayor Bunch and council members. My name is Heather Dukes. I'm an attorney with the Law Offices of Lazarus, Sylvan, and Bangs. We are located at 420 West Roosevelt Street in Phoenix, Arizona. We are before you, seeking your approval of a special use, a special use application today to operate a group home for 10 disabled persons at 3010 East Cloud Road. The group home will be a licensed behavioral health residential facility with the Arizona Department of Health Services, and it will be for sober individuals recovering from drug and alcohol abuse. I am here with my client Mitch Prager and his wife, Andra Prager. I'm also here with the main partner with my firm, his name is Larry Lazarus, and I'm being judged right now at my presentation, so. I also have with me here Marcy Rosenberg of our firm, and Andy Bennett from Recovery Consultants, might be here.
Oh, he's, uh, wife's having some medical issues tonight.
Okay.
He's available.
Okay. So I have here on the slide here today, the Declaration of Emergency that was signed by Governor Ducey in 2016. This declaration underscores the need for state licensed group home facilities for disabled residents throughout our state. I have highlighted on the screen three parts, and one, it says from 2012 to 2016, opioid deaths increased 74 percent. These deaths, as a result of overdose and addiction, are preventable, and most importantly, the opioid overdose epidemic affects all Arizonans. Prior to the hearing this evening, I submitted a letter in response to the Rose Law Group letter dated July 11th, 2018. I'm going to run through an abbreviated version of that letter and really focus on how we satisfy the six special use criteria, since that seemed to be the main issue presented in that letter. But before I do, I wanted to touch on three key subject matters as we consider this special use, special use application. What is this use? How is it protected under federal law? And why should this special use be approved? The applicant is proposing to provide a home to disabled residents, and while residing at the home, the disabled residents will be provided a peer social support group in a family setting, counseling services, individual and group therapy sessions, assistance with the self-administration of medication, therapeutic opportunities by participating in exercise, yoga, and meditation, and alternative forms of therapy, such as art and equine therapy. The counseling and treatment being offered at the residence requires state licensure through the Arizona Department of Health Services. The point I want to emphasize is that this use is a residential use of land, whether you call it a group home under the zoning ordinance or a behavioral health residential facility under the state regulations. And again, this use is highly regulated by both state statute under ARS Section 36-401 and Title IX, Chapter 10 of the Arizona Administrative Code. One of the fundamental characteristics of these residences for disabled individuals in recovery is that they seek to emulate a family in an integrated and normalized setting in the community. And that is why experts and court cases alike on this topic have recognized the importance of allowing disabled residents to live in residential neighborhoods of their choice. So to summarize, the applicant's primary use is a residence. As a residence for recovering substance abusers in a supervised setting, this use would fall under the town's definition of group home. So for my second point, I just want to talk about how this use is protected under federal law. And so I provided a lot of information in the two letters that I submitted, first to the Planning Commission, then you today. The one, the one area that I really, really, really cannot emphasize enough is that the Federal Housing Act case law from Arizona and throughout the country reaffirms a disabled person's right to live in a dwelling or a community of their choice. Equal opportunity gives handicapped individuals the right to choose to live in neighborhoods of their choice, because that right serves to end their exclusion from mainstream society. And if Marcy, you can go to the very next slide here. And what I'm, the language I'm quoting right now is from Kennedy versus Prescott Canyon Estates Homeowners Association, which is an Arizona court case. Because the goal is to reintegrate disabled residents into society rather than to continue large-scale institutionalized treatment, giving disabled residents the right to choose their home is a cornerstone of the fair housing laws. Other jurisdictions have also recognized that a handicapped individual must be allowed to enjoy a particular dwelling, not just some dwelling somewhere in the city. And I'm quoting the case from Oxford House Incorporated versus City of Baton Rouge. So to conclude my second point, the Fair Housing Act prevents the town from making zoning decisions which discriminate against a disabled person's right to live in neighborhoods and particular dwellings of their choice. So this brings me to my third and final point, and I will try to go through these as quickly as possible, and that is why this special use should be approved. This is an aerial photo of the particular dwelling. It's in a residential neighborhood within the town of Cave Creek. It's in a beautiful area of the valley. This house sits on 4.84 acres, and the significant size of the property is beneficial to the recovery of the residents due to the therapeutic nature of the significant open space and also the equestrian facilities. On this slide, I'm showing you kind of a context, context aerial of the site, and you can see that the site is surrounded by state land to both the north and east, and what you can't see from this photo is that also to the south, there is state land. So the property has only one neighbor to the west. So the first criteria of the special use application requires the applicant to show that the location, size, design, and operational characteristics of the proposed special use would not be detrimental to the health, welfare, and safety of the surrounding neighborhoods or its occupants, nor be substantially or permanently injurious to neighboring property. I want to talk first about the location of the group home, which would not be detrimental to the health, welfare, and safety. This location will have no impacts on the surrounding land uses. The property, again, has only one single-family residence to the west, and the applicant has chosen a location with buffering and open space required by the Desert Rural 190 zoning district. Next slide, Marcy, please.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Is she limited to three minutes, or can she keep going?
No, this is a presentation from the applicant. They've got enough time.
Why is I given her a chance, too?
You'll, you'll get three minutes.
But she's getting more than three minutes.
Yes, sir, that's the way this works.
Well, I don't think that's very legal to me. You better call your times ahead of time, what they could do.
Sir, it's inappropriate to stand up now.
Hey, Mayor Bunch, question. We have our attorney here, too. Does he get 20 or 30 minutes also, or does he get three minutes to speak our case?
Mr. Sims, help me out here.
This is a hearing, the property, the applicant is making her case. I think after the applicant is finished, we then will, I think it would be appropriate to allow, but the problem is, how many attorneys are here representing?
Raise your hand.
Yeah, how many do we have?
Well, we only had one. We didn't have one until he got one, so we had to get one because...
But is there only one? I'm trying to figure out how many we have.
Just one.
We only need one.
Then I think we, I think we could allow that attorney a reasonable time to respond.
Yeah, thank you.
Marcy, next slide. Okay, right here. So the property's expansive size provides more than adequate open space and buffering from the single-family residence to the east. I have here circled on the screen, a native habitat corridor, which measures 12 feet in width, and it's measured inward from all property lines. Next slide, please. So as you can see from the distance measurement at the bottom of the screen there, by being located within the DR zoning district, the native habitat corridor requirement has created a 24-foot buffer of natural open space bounded by two masonry walls between the homes on the property and the single-family parcel to the west. The applicant's location within this zoning district also allows for compatibility, because more intensive uses are allowed in the DR zoning district. The DR zoning district allows private ranch offering, I'm sorry, private ranch uses, offering boarding and breeding services, equine training, equine lessons, the sale of ranch animals, and 4H and other youth-related activities. This zoning district also allows, as of right, public parks and recreational facilities. So private ranches and public parks, recreational facilities have no limitation on the number of individuals that may enjoy these uses on a daily basis. Therefore, by being located in this district, the proposed group home would have no greater impact on surrounding properties than these more intensive uses permitted as of right. On this next slide, I want to talk about the, the collector's street system that's in this area. Both Cloud Road and 32nd Street are designated within the Town of Cave Creek's street classification map as a minor collector's street. According to the town's circulation element of the general plan, the town's collector's street system is intended to provide both access to and traffic circulation within residential neighborhoods and commercially uses. Minor collector's streets, such as Cloud Road, which abuts our site to the, along the frontage, and 32nd Street, are specifically defined as roadway serving some trips from local roadways destined for the arterial system, and then some trips that are destined for abutting land use. While we recognize that the Town of Cave Creek promotes unpaved residential local streets as an effective means of minimizing traffic in residential areas, Cloud Road and 32nd Street are not local streets. They are intended to serve as connecting roadways carrying traffic from local streets to and from Cave Creek's arterial street system. Next slide, please, Marcy. Okay, so this is the circulation map from the general plan, and you can see that the yellow dotted lines are the alignment of Cloud Road and then also 32nd Street. The star there is our property at 3010 East Cloud Road. Next slide again, Marcy. What's unique about this area is this property is in very close proximity to the Cave Creek Regional Park. It's just north of this site. And so traffic visiting the park can only access the park from 32nd Street. So any traffic coming from the south, on this next slide, we're going to show you the route. They would come from Carefree Highway up 32nd Street, or come from Cloud Road, and then north along 32nd Street to get to that main access gate at the park. The Cave Creek Regional Park is certainly unique, and it's in, I wouldn't say an intensive, but it's a well-used recreational area for the town. The family campground consists of 44 campsites for tents or RV camping. There's horseback riding stables. The trails within the Cave Creek Regional Park are very popular because of the dramatic elevations, which offer spectacular views of the surrounding plains. Hiking is also a big use of the regional park, with over 11 miles of trails for hiking, mountain biking, and horseback riding. The day-use picnic areas provide 51 individual picnic sites, and for large groups wanting to picnic together, weddings, or office parties, they can consider renting such remadas. So again, this is a very active use just to the north of us, and they use these minor collector's streets. Finally, the nature center is an amphitheater, which provides patios and classrooms, which also may be rented for events. And then these are some of the trails in the park. I don't want to belabor this, but there's also a rodeo arena that's directly north, and what's unique about the arena is that it's not accessed from 32nd Street. From what I can tell in aerial photographs, you would need to go north on 32nd Street if you're coming from the south or the east, and then head west on Cloud Road, right in front of this property and the other residences, and then travel north along, I think it's 26th Street, up to the Cave Creek Memorial, actually, it's north on 28th Street, I apologize, to access the rodeo grounds up there. Finally, the location at this property within the Town of Cave Creek is compatible with the area, and it does not create clustering concerns that are typical in some of these other jurisdictions like Prescott, Phoenix, Scottsdale, where you have too many group homes that are located too close to one another. Because there are no group homes located within the town, we don't have that problem. I also did a search on the ADHS website. There is a Excel spreadsheet of residential service providers. The two locations that came up with a city or town of Cave Creek are actually located within the city of Phoenix's boundaries. So again, even the state's website has confirmed that there are no state licensed group homes within the town's boundaries. With regard to size in the first criteria, again, size would not be detrimental to the health, welfare, and safety of the surrounding neighborhood. Next slide. I want to emphasize that the size of a group home under the Cave Creek zoning ordinance as it stands does not limit the number of disabled residents. It also does not limit the number of staff that are needed in order to provide the supervised living facilities, and so therefore, there would be no authority under the zoning ordinance at this time to limit this group home use, you know, to a lower number, such as six, which is what the opposition has proposed. The Desert Rural 190 zoning district and the size of this property is also unique, because it allows for two dwelling units. You have the primary residence, and then you also have a structure called a detached accessory living quarter, and there's no limitation on the length of stay in that detached structure, or also whether a separate family may reside in it. So you could have a scenario, and I have several listed up here, I'm just going to say one, for example, where you have a husband and wife and several children living in the primary residence, but then you have ranch hands that are living in the detached accessory living quarters, because you're operating a private ranch. And so you can see, or foresee, a situation where you have, you know, several people living on this property as a residence. We prepared a traffic impact study by Kimley Horn, and these are the staff that the traffic engineer used to perform that traffic impact study. We are required by ADHS to have a full-time administrator, a full-time clinical director, a behavioral health technician or paraprofessional, just one on the site at one time. So they'll go in shifts of three, one during the day, one second shift, and then finally the graveyard shift. We'll have a full-time chef, and then a full-time housekeeper, which basically equates to five full-time staff there during the day. We'd also provide for a maintenance person, a registered nurse on call, a medical doctor on call, and then an off-site community outreach employee. So we have a total of 12, yes, 12 full-time employees. So for Kimley Horn's study, the traffic statement concluded that the behavioral health residential facility would generate about 16 daily trips per day. Five of those trips would be created during the AM/PM peak hour, I'm sorry, the AM peak hour, and actually, that would be six trips. Marcy, one more, click. There you go. You can see that the total trip generation is 16 vehicles per day. When evaluating a single-family residence on this property, rather than a group home, Kimley Horn concluded that using the ITE Trip Generation Manual, that there would be 20 trips generated per day, because again, you have those two dwelling units on the property. The Kimley Horn traffic statement concluded that the trip generation calculations indicate that on an average weekday, there is no appreciable difference between the trips that can be expected to be generated by the existing residential land use and the proposed behavioral health residential facility. The traffic statement also concluded that the difference in peak hour trip generation is not expected to have a significant impact on the capacity of the surrounding street system. Next slide. The size of a 10-person group home is consistent with the town's building code. In the town, the town building code amended it recently, and in the classifications for buildings, it contemplates a group home with 10 persons. You can see the, the area outlined in green. A facility such as the above, and we have group homes and alcohol and drug abuse centers, with 10 or fewer persons, shall be classified as a Group R4 classification, and that's a residential building. So again, even the building code contemplates group homes and these types of centers having 10 persons. You can skip this one, Marcy. This table provides an example of some of the other jurisdictions that have recently amended their zoning ordinance. The city of Phoenix at the top, and you can click once, Marcy, provides for a community residence home, which is basically a group home, and it allows for 10 unrelated individuals with disabilities as of right. There's no special use requirement. A family, on the other hand, again, is provided for at five persons. Next click, Marcy. City of Scottsdale also provides for 10 adults with disabilities, and the... City of Scottsdale also provides for 10 adults with disabilities, and the Town of Prescott provides for five to 12, um, persons with disabilities, but they have kind of a unique ordinance where if it's a transitional community residence, where you have somebody living there for months rather than years, you have to get a conditional use permit if you don't meet an 800-foot separation, or, um, if you're not operating with a state license. So, if we were in Prescott, we would be able to satisfy both of those criteria and would be able to operate as of right. This is the main issue, um, that I wanted to discuss here tonight, is that when you have six unrelated disabled residents and a special use approval is required, which is the scenario, um, that is being proposed by the opponents, but then you have six unrelated residents and no special use approval is required, the only difference you have there is the yellow word, and that's disability. So, under the Sharp Visions versus Borough of Plum case, they recognize that that scenario would be discriminatory treatment when you apply a special use requirement for the same number of individuals in both categories, but only to disability, um, type uses. You can go to the next slide, Marcy. Okay, the design of the home, so let's, let's get to the fun pictures, because I'm boring you. Here we go. This design of this property is consistent with the single-family nature of the area because it's already been developed as a residence. There was a site plan approval, which approved the scale of the building, the architecture of the building, the, uh, the density, the lot coverage, and so all of this created this very beautiful property that's in keeping with the surrounding area. We're just going to go through a few of these pictures here. One of the things that came up is whether Mitch is proposing a group home or a boutique resort. Um, and I think what he was trying to convey is that it's a very resort-like property. You can tell from the pictures, it's well-maintained, it's very serene, very beautiful. This aerial photograph demonstrates the substantial setback of the property at 320 feet, that's a football field with two end zones. So, again, that's a significant setback from the street, where you're not going to be able to see, um, any of the cars, you can barely see the buildings from the street. Next slide, Marcy. Also, there are seating areas and a fire pit area, but it's, again, on the east side of the house, away from the residences to the west. So, there's a house in between where people would sit, and then the nearest residence to the west. The parking structure, the detached parking garage, and the main driveway, you can see how big that driveway area is also on the east side of the property, away from the other single-family residences. So, we're going to go through, this is, uh, at 2802 East Cloud Road. You can see from Cloud Road, that again, this house is set back considerably, but the landscaping does not provide much screening. Next house, a little bit more screening, again, a substantial setback from Cloud Road. This is at 2970 East Cloud Road, this is our next-door neighbor, again, set back considerably. And then this right here is taken from our southwest corner of our subject property, and you cannot see our house. You cannot see the garage, you cannot see the driveway from the street. Again, this is taken from the center, the midpoint of the property, you cannot see into the property whatsoever. And then finally, at the southeast corner, you can maybe make out the tops of the roofs there, but other than that, you're not going to be seeing any parking or, uh, disabled residents living on the property. I'm not going to go through the operational characteristics. That, again, is very highly regulated by ADHS, and it's set forth in detail in our letter. So, you can just click through all these, Marcy. With regard to the site plan, circulation plan, and architectural design, again, this property's already been developed as a residence, so all of these, these issues, um, have been satisfied because building permits were issued, a certificate of occupancy was issued, and we are merely taking over the residential use of the property. The third special use criteria talks about minimizing negative impacts on existing uses in the area, such as minimizing the creation of noise, glare, fumes, dust, smoke, vibration, fire hazard, or other injurious or noxious impacts. So, as we've shown in the pictures, the property's size, landscaping, screen walls, and location provides adequate mitigation solutions relating to the potential noise and dust typical cre, uh, I'm sorry, typically created by residential use. Um, dust will be managed by the Maricopa County Air Quality Department. The town also has a noise ordinance that can be enforced. The group home's evening curfew will help mitigate noise. Potential fire hazards will be mitigated by the installation of an automatic fire sprinkler system. And then, the traffic impact statement, uh, submitted by the applicant confirms that, uh, the area will not suffer from negative impacts arising from increased trip generation or peak hour congestion. And then also, the applicant has provided a letter from an appraiser, uh, finding that there's no evidence of group homes negatively impacting property values or neighboring For the fourth special use criteria, this, um, takes it, takes the focus from the immediate area more to all of the town and the public uses in the area. And so, because ADHS has regulatory oversight, and they require the presence of trained staff on the property, those two factors will ensure that public services such as police and fire protection are used in a manner that are consistent with or substantially less than the surrounding single-family residences. There is no evidence that the group home will cause an increase in the use and repair of residential roads. Adequate parking facilities are available on-site. Again, this, this, uh, property has five enclosed parking spaces, and then that huge driveway area that I showed you to the east. And then, the property is also served with adequate water and an on-site septic system. For the fifth special use criteria, um, this requires conformance with the general plan. The forward section of the 2000, actually, it's supposed to be 2005. It's supposed to be 2018 or 2005, Marcy? Go back one more time. Okay, so the general plan has a forward section. One more, Marcy, forward. Which identifies, okay, so the general, uh, plan identifies general principles that unify the values of Cave Creek, such as low-density rural residential environments, dark skies, and quiet environments, and protected views. These are the same features that promote healing in a residential sa, setting for individuals with disabilities. The proposed group home use conforms to the land use element, goal number five, which provides for a diverse mixture of housing opportunities. And then, the group home use also promotes the general plan's policy-action statement, which requires review of the requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinances to permit all types of housing in a manner consistent with legal requirements. And so, that's why we're here today, basically. This, the final, final, final special use criteria, um, it, the applicant is required to show that it does not require additional land area, we do not need additional land Vice Mayor Silva mentioned the joint statement between HUD and the Justice Department. Um, one of the key areas that addresses that, that contention that the town council should be lowering the number of disabled residents to six is highlighted here on the screen, I'm just going to read it quickly for you. It says, "Local zoning and land use laws that treat groups of unrelated persons with disabilities less favorably than similar groups without disabilities violate the Fair Housing Act. For example, suppose a city zoning ordinance defines a family to include up to a certain number of unrelated persons living together as a household unit, and give such a group home of unrelated persons the right to live in any zoning district without special permission from the city. If that ordinance also prohibits a group home having the same number of persons with disabilities in a certain district, or requires it to seek a use permit, the ordinance would violate the Fair Housing Act." At the Planning Commission, I went through, um, a pretty detailed analysis of the prejudicial fears. I'm going to suffice it to say that there is a page in the Justice Department and HUD joint statement, which talks about how cities may not deny zoning approvals, um, based upon, you know, bias, prejudice, fears that are, uh, not based upon fact. And so, I would just caution you here, here, you know, tonight, when you are hearing statements from the crowd, we are, um, I am standing here before you today, and I have, I have instructed Mitch, our applicant, Sobermans Estate LLC, that in reality, he is not required to go through this special use process. He should be allowed to open with 10 persons as of right, based upon the Fair Housing Act laws. Instead, Mitch wants to go through this special use process. He has agreed to 12 conditions that he thinks is important to the town, it's important to him to work with the town, and that's, uh, what we really want to emphasize here tonight. We want a decision tonight. Mitch has worked very hard, uh, with staff, with the city attorney, with me, with the Planning Commission at the last hearing, to come up with conditions that meet the concerns of the neighbors, meet the concerns of the town, and will, um, produce a beneficial use for this community. One more, Marcy. The last thing I want to bring up is that before Mitch hired our firm, he had obtained legal advice from the Rose Law Group, which is here today representing the opposition. We provided a waiver of that conflict, but there was an email that came up from Mitch's file, which talks about some of the things, same things that we are talking about in our correspondence, and what we're presenting here to you tonight. And to be honest, these, the Rose Law Group and our position are exactly the same, at least their initial position. And I'm going to read this statement here to you. This is from a planner named Nick Lobody of Rose Law Group. In the statement, he says, "We can put together arguments to make a case to the city planning staff that they can't actually require you to go through the use permit process based on laws and precedent. If that's successful, there would no longer be a use permit requirement, and you could move straight to state licensing." Under the option two, he talks about if it's unsuccessful, we can ba, begin putting together the use permit application, we're making strong arguments for the facility that would include its merits and conformance with the approval criteria, but also the strong arguments that they do not have the legal right to deny it. Cities and towns have to provide reasonable accommodation for the protected classes of people, which would include your patients to have access to services. This has resulted in most cities interpreting it as they cannot stop them from locating where they want to be unless there are already several facilities in the immediate area. And as I've demonstrated to you in my, uh, presentation here tonight, there are no other facilities in the Town of Cave Creek. He goes on, he says, "Worst-case scenario is that Cave Creek requires a use permit application, then denies it, and you are forced to either give up or sue. The odds of a successful litigation will depend on the details, but you will have the laws very much on your side." I'd ask you to consider my presentation, uh, the unanimous recommendation of approval by the Planning Commission and staff, and approve the special use permit application before you here tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time, and I apologize for taking so much of your time this evening.
Yes, ma'am, I have some questions, please, yes. Yes, Ms. Dukes, you call yourself a behavioral health residential facility.
Yes.
Not a sober living home.
Correct.
What is the difference?
So, the sober living homes are group home facilities that do not provide care. There's no counseling services, there's no treatment. Once you add care and treatment and those counseling services to the residents, that's when the Arizona Department of Health Services gets involved, and they require you to have certain staff available because you're providing care to these individuals. So, that's the difference, and we would be seeking that higher level of care that state, um, regulated with the number of staff and then the regulations in the, uh, nine series, or R9-10-700 series.
So, then the new legislation, SB 1465, would not apply to you?
Correct.
At all?
At all.
And secondly, you already know, I'm sure, but the town's definition of a group home is, uh, individuals recovering from drug addiction and alcoholism. Our Arizona Fair Housing laws say disability does not include addiction to drugs or illegal or opioids. So, under Arizona federal law, you would not be able to have people, you would only be able to have alcoholics in your facility, not people that are addicted to drugs, am I correct? Per the, per the law?
Per the law, that would be people currently using. If they're sober and they have no longer be using, but once, once you have gone to a detox facility, or you have stopped using substances such as drugs, let's say an opioid, you would still be considered a person with a disability. So, you would be a disabled resident that could live in this home.
But it doesn't, that's not what it says. It says disability does not include addiction to drugs or illegal or federally-controlled substances. So, you cannot be a recovering drug user, you can be a recovering alcoholic, but that's not what the, so, you could not have both of those, am I correct? Because it's very specific. It does not include that they are not disabled, is what it's telling me right there. Disability does not include this, so they would not be classified as disabled.
So, you have stumped me, because that's the first time I've heard this. Typically, we've represented other facilities, and anyone that is, um, recovering from a drug addiction has always been considered a disabled person, and so I don't have the answer to that.
I think it came out of your information.
No. Right, so, uh, under the supremacy clause, I would say that the Arizona Department, I'm not, sorry, the Fair Housing Act.
For Arizona, right.
Yeah, the, no, the Fair Housing Act under the federal government would control.
I'm talking about Arizona, let's stay with where I am. Okay, first, is the Arizona Fair Housing Law, it says, "A disability does not include addiction to drugs." So, anybody that was addicted would not qualify to drugs, they would only be alcohol that you could have, per the Arizona law.
Okay.
Councilmember Wright, you, you've raised a good point. I mean, in the stipulations, we've required no one currently having, undergoing detoxification can participate in the program. I think what Mitch and the applicant is saying, that the Fair Housing Act does include the universe of people who have rec, who are recovering but no longer are addicted as being disabled, and I think they've cited a number of cases that would take supremacy over the state cases.
So, then they, so anybody in the facility is no longer classified as disabled? Because I thought that was the key.
No, they can't be, they can't, they can't be currently addicted, and that's one of the conditions we have.
Well, if they're, if they're currently not addicted, then...
It would be number seven. In the, in the event of detoxification, the resident must complete detoxification prior to living in the group home. That was our attempt to prevent those who are currently addicted from occupying the residence. I do, I do believe the cases that are in sight suggest that, um, not just, uh, alcohol, recovering from opioids, would be, would be a disability under federal law. I don't know where you're getting this data from.
They came right out of the information that they provided us, I can find it, page.
I think at this point in time, it'd be appropriate to explain, explain the supremacy clause to my counsel.
It's, it's, well, it is, it is, it's what you're doing here tonight. The federal, the federal laws prevail over, over some state laws, and the, and the numerous cases cited by the applicant, and I cited to you in confidential memorandum, suggest that the Fair Housing Act prevails over, over state law. The numerous references when Ms. Dukes talked about, a local jurisdiction cannot, under the guise of its zoning ordinance, discriminate against a disabled, that's federal law. And, uh, and so, the fact that federal law protects that universe of, of, of individuals is something that you have to honor as, as elected officials.
And Heather, this came straight out of your material, page three, number five.
Correct.
Disability means blah blah. Okay, disability does not include addiction to any drug or illegal or federally-controlled substance.
Well, it says current illegal use of, so it means current addiction or current illegal use. So, yeah, it, the current is what I'm seeing as the preface there is, i, if you have stopped using drugs, you are a disabled resident. And that's, so I, the current is the key word there in that sentence. So, I just, I want to clarify one more time, is that a person with a disability is someone who has a mental or physical impairment that substantially limits at least one major life activity, and there is an exception for people who are currently using or currently addicted. And so, once you have stopped using the drug, you, or alcohol, you fall under that disabled class of persons. So, when, that's why during my presentation, I really emphasized that these... So, that's why during my presentation, I really emphasized that these residents will be sober. They're going to be recovering from their prior substance abuses, their prior alcoholism. But again, it's, it's a recovery process, and those were prior actions where they're no longer using.
So, they are no longer considered disabled?
No, they are considered disabled.
So, that's the key?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's what it says here, right here. I mean, when you read it, disability does not include this classification of people that were addicted or at one point were addicted to drugs. So, that would, they would not qualify as being disabled.
They, they do not qualify as being disabled when they are currently using the drug. Once they stop using the drug and they go through a detoxification process, or they, they just stop using opioids, or they stop drinking alcohol, you can still have an addiction issue, and that's what you're trying to recover from. And at that point, you are disabled, and you would qualify under this protected class.
Okay. So, then also, this Arizona law is contradicted to a Cave Creek's law as well. So, there's...
Excuse me. Kathy, please. No, I'm supported, bro. I'm giving the exam.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
It's the same latitude as someone who's arguing with her as well, so we can't allow that.
So, Heather, in addition to that, Cave Creek's law does not comply with Arizona's Fair Housing Law. So, we have all this convoluted, things aren't accurate, they need to be redone, correct?
No.
Because Cave Creek law is different than Arizona law when it comes to this, because Cave Creek says it's both drugs and alcohol. Arizona law does not say that. It says only, you're only alcohol, not drugs. It's very specific.
Arizona law and federal law protect persons who are recovering from both drug and alcohol abuse. They've stopped using, and now they're recovering. So, both Arizona and federal law protect persons that were substance abusers, were in the past, and now are recovering from that addiction.
But federal law and Cave Creek law have two classifications. They have alcohol, and they have drugs. The Arizona Fair Housing does not have that. It only has alcohol.
I, I respectfully disagree. The provision I'm reading right here, under the Fair Housing Act statutes of Arizona, talk about the only time when a person is not deemed to have a disability is when they are currently illegally using drugs. So, once, once they've stopped using the drugs, they fall under the declassification of having a disability.
And Councilmember Wright, that's why one of the conditions are to prohibit those kind of individuals from occupying the residence.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I don't have a question. Is, I'd like to make a statement that recently, I sit on the League of Cities and Towns, and one of the issues that's coming forward this year at the League of Cities and Towns is, I'd like to read it to you, just so that maybe it might help other people understand. Senate Bill 1465 passed this session requiring the Arizona Department of Health Services, ADHS, to establish a statewide licensing system for all sober living homes operating in the state. The measure was supported by the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, and became necessary as the number of poorly-run, unregulated sober living homes substantially increased and began to have a negative impact on neighborhoods across the state. It is imperative that the Arizona Department of Health Services establishes and adopts a licensing system as soon as possible. So, this year, the League of Cities and Towns should work with ADHS to ensure that the rulemaking process of the sober living home licensing system is completed expeditiously as possible, including using the expedited rulemaking process as authorized in Senate Bill 1465. And I think that'll help clear up a lot of what people perceive them to be. Prescott tends to be, you know, the place where they came, and unfortunately, I say children, because they were quite young, and then they went through a process, someone opened up an apartment complex, turned it into that, and then they were on the streets. At one point, they had something like 2,500 children on the streets and in the alleyways. And I think that's what we're trying to avoid here. I do tend to think that discrimination can happen at all levels, especially when it comes to economics. It's unfortunate that this home will not be open to anyone who cannot afford it, which is unfortunate. But I think that the state and the League of Cities and Towns is looking at this and wants to move it along quickly. Two years is too long, at least for some of us. So, there is a difference, and Arizona is moving forward with this, so just want to make it public.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Wright, did you have more questions?
No, thank you.
Well, I believe we're ready for the gentleman from Rose.
Thank you.
Can I get the clicker, please? Or is that... Thank you. To move it forward? Okay. Does this move it forward, this right one? Small button?
I have no clue. Sorry.
Is it like a game controller?
Just try this one. Just these buttons. What can I do here?
It's actually a scroll wheel, so probably these are the better ones you want.
Okay. I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay. If I need that, I'll let you know. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm sorry, can you hear me? I'm Thomas Galvin with Rose Law Group on behalf of concerned residents who live in Cave Creek, Mr. Fanton, Mr. Finley, Morgan Harris, and their families. They will be directly and adversely impacted. What we are here tonight is not about a discrimination or federal housing or disability law. This is a zoning case. And of course, everyone supports the Fair Housing Act. Everyone supports the Americans with Disabilities Act. But you are here to uphold the law, and the folks sitting here tonight behind me, I believe, want you to uphold the law. But before I get into my presentation, I have to say there are some things I didn't think I'd have to say. I've been working in zoning and land use cases all around the valley, contentious cases, South Phoenix, Scottsdale, Glendale, P R U, name it. I've never heard, while the presentation was being made, that an entire group and neighborhood of people were going to have to be warned about being prejudiced or biased or discriminatory. And I don't think you folks consider yourselves prejudiced, biased, or discriminatory, do you? These are not prejudiced folks. These are not biased folks. These are good folks. I used to live in, I used to work in Cave Creek. I used to eat at all the fabulous restaurants here. I know people in Cave Creek. I don't think anyone here is prejudiced or biased. I think they have legitimate and very grounded concerns about how a land use zoning ordinance is going to be applied. And I also want to address something that I thought was very unfortunate at the end of Mrs. Duke's presentation, was an email from Rose Law Group. That was an email from an urban planner who works at our office, who was providing some information about the town of Cave Creek. And unfortunately, what you saw tonight, which is excerpts of an email, the crowd here tonight wasn't given the entire email, or emails, or the thread of emails. And in fact, you were not informed that those emails were written before the applicant had sent in his application. So, I cannot speak for Mr. Lobbity, because I found out about this conflict on Friday. And we endeavored to work hard with the applicant, and we apologize to the applicant for the conflict, but most of all, I apologize to our clients, because I didn't know about the conflict. And I was willing to step down, and my colleague, who's not be able to hear tonight, Evan Bolick, we were willing to step down. And we told the other side, please, we are willing to step down because there's a conflict. We apologize for that. We're going to work hard to find them another counsel. They deserve counsel here tonight, just like the applicant has an attorney. But Ms. Dukes and her applicant were gracious enough to sign a conflict waiver. So, we came here tonight to represent, in a legal capacity, Mr. Fanton and his family, Mr. Finley, and Ms. Harris. So, it is unfortunate that an email was provided tonight that did come from a Rose Law Group planner, not even an attorney, but before the application was filed. So, I just want you to know that. The other unfortunate thing was that today, Ms. Duke submitted to you, and it's dated today, July 16th, a 52-page letter. You've not seen this, have you?
No.
No one has seen this. The email that was cited is the very last page, and in fact, the email that's not on the presentation, I'm just going to do what she did. I'm going to write an excerpt. Mr. Lobbity wrote, "These permits have to go through a full public hearing. Cave Creek's ordinance does not adequately define the various types of facilities, so there is some room for interpretation as to what actually should be required to go through this process." And the email also says, "The town may see it differently and try to enforce their laws or deny the permit." She didn't tell that to you. So, we can go argue back and forth on excerpts of an email that was just sent to you today. Secondly, in this 52-page letter that you received today, that we received this afternoon, there's a traffic study. I don't think anyone here has seen the traffic study. They have legal counsel. We don't have the opportunity to rebut or to vet or to go through that traffic study today. So, what I'm going to ask the mayor and the town council tonight is to continue this item for a future meeting, so we can examine the traffic study, we can examine all the issues brought up tonight. And obviously, there's a lot of confusion. But before that, I'm going to go through the presentation. Hopefully, I can figure out this scroll.
Good luck.
And talk to you about why this is a zoning case, in which you can apply the statute for a group home in the zoning ordinance, and still be in compliance with the federal housing authority and the ADA. And now I realize I don't have it. This is not working. So, I'm going to take that keyboard now, please. You can be prejudiced against my computer skills, because they're not good. Okay. That's just the arrows. We wrote to you a letter last week in which the S U P should be denied. If you deny a special use permit, it's because you're denying it because it does not conform with the zoning ordinance of Cave Creek. Chapter 13, chapter 2, spell out the definition of a group home, which is a very simple, short definition, does not contemplate what is a commercial operation. When Mr. Prager appeared before the Planning Commission in May and June, he said something very differently that he did not say tonight. He compared it to a boutique resort hotel. He talked about having a spa. You didn't hear that tonight. He talked about having a movie theater. You did not hear that tonight. There are going to be 14 probably employees at this commercial operation. This is not a residential operation. This is a for-profit business that is going to charge probably $30,000 per month per customer. And yes, there is an opioid crisis in Arizona, but ask yourselves, how many people in Arizona can pay $30,000 a month to enjoy boutique hotel resort spa masquerading as a group home? Not that many. And in fact, probably many of these people will be coming from out of state. The FHA does not require a grant of the S U P. You can still be in compliance with federal law, but enact reasonable zoning regulations. And in fact, a Fourth Circuit Court ruled, "The FHA does not provide a blanket waiver of all facially neutral zoning policies and rules, regardless of the facts, which would give the disabled carte blanche to determine where and how they should live, regardless of zoning ordinances to the contrary." Ms. Dukes had an exhibit up. Actually, I wish it was still up. It was fantastic. If you looked at it carefully, and I'm sure you did, you would see that it said you cannot apply the law differently. And that's all we're asking. Just apply the law exactly the same. If the law says that no more than six unrelated adults can live in a home, then no more six unrelated adults can live in a home. The question about discrimination toward a disabled is not toward Mr. Prager. He's a commercial operator. He is the applicant. The commercial operation, that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about discriminating against drug addicts or alcoholics. We're talking about how to apply a zoning law in a residential neighborhood, because my clients deserve equal treatment under the law as well. The individuals to be served at the property are not barred from living either in this zoning district or within a group home of their zoning district. Further, up to six unrelated individuals, including those with disabilities protected under the FHA, may live in any residence without obtaining a permit. The problem for Mr. Prager, with the limit of six, is that he says it won't pencil out. That's a quote from him. It's in the minutes, and he wants it to be 10, to be a commercially viable operation. There could be someone else that could apply tomorrow for a group home for six folks, and that will be in compliance with the law. But you have to determine whether or not he is satisfying any of these criteria in order to exceed the limitations of the law. These are the six criteria. The applicant has to satisfy all six criteria in order to be eligible to be granted a special use permit. On the first one, the applicant has failed to show that the proposed group home's characteristics will not be detrimental to the health, welfare, and safety of the surrounding neighborhood and its occupants. The applicant promises that a chauffeur will be the only person driving in and out of the site, but as you can see, there will be a group of employees driving to and from the property as if it's a commercial operation, which it is. There'll be a chef, there'll be housekeepers, there'll be maintenance workers, there'll be medical doctors, there'll be clinical directors, there'll be regular staff members, and there will be people there for the spa, for the pool, for the movie theater, what have you, at what they called a boutique hotel resort at the Planning Commission. The applicant himself stated there'll be 14 employees fulfilling their job duties at the facility. Despite all assurances that the operation will be quiet, the operational characteristics clearly indicate the applicant will undertake an intensive business use generating increased traffic noise and parking issues detrimental to the health, welfare, and safety of the surrounding neighborhood. When the stat, when you read the statute for a group home, it's basically one short sentence, a very simple sentence. Does it occur to you that 14 employees are going to be working in a commercial operation? No, it doesn't. That's not a group home. B, applicant failed to show that the associated site plan and conceptual design are harmonious with the characters of the surrounding area. I saw a lot today about Cave Creek Regional Park. Looks like a beautiful park, but I didn't see too much about the actual operation going on inside. I didn't see anything about a movie theater. I didn't see anything about a spa. I think I'm going to go visit Cave Creek Park, though. It's beautiful. Go hiking, take my family on a picnic. But the applicant testified to the Planning Commission that the use should be a boutique resort. As one of the neighboring residents testified, "This is not a group home. This is a high-end boutique hotel. It's apparent that a boutique resort or luxury boutique hotel would not be harmonious with the characteristic of residential homes in the desert rural zoning district." C, the applicant has failed to show how the proposed use will minimize negative impacts. When there are chauffeurs, outside vendors that will continuously be coming in and out, and employees driving their vehicles all down Cloud Road, the applicant does not adequately indicate how that promise will be enforced. How will Cave Creek enforce those conditions if there is a traffic problem? If there is an issue with all these commercial vendors driving to and from the site? If there's an issue with employees of a commercial business driving into or from a home in a residential district? The applicant informed the Planning Commission that family members will be able to visit patients and guests for up to a week at a time. That was not given in the presentation tonight, but this was a key feature of Mr. Prager's presentation back in May and June, where he talked about that family members will be able to visit. These are not patients. These are not folks under FHA or under ADA regulations. They're not a protected class. These will be people flying in or driving up, who'll be able to stay at the home and enjoy all of the characteristics and all of the fanciful things going on at the resort. The applicant failed to show the town's emergency services will not be burdened by the proposed use. What's going to happen when a medical emergency's happened? How is Cave Creek going to prepare for that, for a commercial operation in a residential area? All of the patients, anyone can be vulnerable to medical accidents and incidents while experiencing a critical time in their lives. By the applicant's own design, they may suffer from medical episodes that will require emergency responders to travel to the property. How will that occur when our clients are living right next door? These are things to think about, and these are reasons why the wise people of Cave Creek set certain limitations for unrelated adults living in a facility, regardless of their status or class. E, the applicant failed to show that the proposed use is in compliance with the general plan. If you look at the narrative, which is what really is what we have tonight, is the application, is the narrative. It barely glanced through the general plan. Tonight's presentation is for public consumption. But the town of Cave Creek general plan stated goal is to preserve the rural land use pattern of Cave Creek because of the character and development of varied lot sizes, and existing rural, rural land uses contribute to a small western look feel. Once again, a commercial operation in a residential area does not comport with that. So, as you can see, the applicant has failed to satisfy all of the elements required for the grant of the S U P. Regardless of the FHA requirements, the town is not prohibited from limiting the size of up to six residents. That wouldn't be an issue. There will be amenities provided, including a movie theater and a spa, as stated by the applicant himself. When does a group home operating as a hotel resort stop being considered a group home in compliance with Cave Creek's zoning ordinance? So, once again, I mentioned earlier that we do hope that you continue this item, because as you can see, there's a lot of contested issues. But if you do approve it, we do have some suggested conditions. Number one, limit the number of tenants to a maximum of six at a time pursuant to the zoning ordinance. But if you do approve it, we do have some suggested conditions. Number one, limit the number of tenants to a maximum of six at a time pursuant to the zoning ordinance. Number two, require construction of off-street covered parking to accommodate tenants and vendors. As a full-service medical facility and hotel, there will be many vehicles parked at the property to accommodate the tenants and services. To prevent a conflict between the urban use of a medical facility and surrounding natural features in residential homes, the town should require the property to erect and provide covered onsite parking. Number three, place reasonable limitation on non-emergency service and visitation hours. This facility will be providing a multitude of services to numerous tenants and their families, which will result in a definite increase in traffic to and from the property, definitely generating additional noise. Such neighboring environment will be tough for the environment and for the livestock. To mitigate this risk, the town should adopt a condition limiting service and visitation hours. We suggest residents propose that the property may provide non-emergency services between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. Also, require the property to be ADA compliant. The applicant is marketing the property to those with medical conditions. It's imperative that the property, even though it was once a home, will be fully compliant with current ADA regulations. The property better meet the needs of tenants, ensure accessibility to patients with all medical needs, and lessen the need for emergency services caused by injuries. Also, the owner of the property must establish and maintain contact information at which complaints may be submitted." There will be complaints if this gets approved. I can assure you, it will be. If you ever put a commercial operation next to residential homes, there's always complaints. In the event the tenants or vendors of the property cause issues with neighboring properties, including loitering, parking violations, excessive noise, violations of these conditions, contact information must be made available at which complaints can be submitted to the applicant for redress. And finally, the prohibition of firearms. It's another issue that was not addressed tonight. "The applicant shall include as a provision of any agreement with the tenants that the tenants shall not keep or use a firearm while residing at the property. The condition will protect the safety and welfare of the surrounding area, including my clients." So once again, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, I ask you to continue this item to a future meeting. If you do approve this, please enact those conditions for the health and safety of my clients and the neighborhood. And just remember that this is a land use zoning case. No one is advocating for any discrimination, for any prejudice, or to violate any federal laws. Thank you.[742.11][742.11][applause]
I can't hear you.
Mr. Mayor, I think you need to complete the hearing, and then we can have discussion among you, and I can come.
Okay. Would it be appropriate for council to ask him questions as well?
Sure, sure.
Councilors, are there any questions for the gentleman from Rose? Apparently not.
Well, I do have something to say, though. You've brought up a great deal for us to consider, that's for sure. There's always two sides to every story, and I think it's important that we probably get more legal counsel from our council based on the new information that's being provided. That's simply my opinion. So the question would be if council is looking for that.
He's indicated at this point in time, as we're still in hearing, so it's time for the call to the public, the folks that took time to fill out those sheets. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. We've had the experts tell us, but go ahead and let's... And we want to make sure that remarks... Well, no, go ahead.
Brian Walker, please state your name and address for the record.
Brian Walker, 6498 East Nightglobe Circle, Scottsdale. Good evening. Mayor Bunch, Vice Mayor Solva, Councilman, Councilman. Ladies and gentlemen, for the record, my name is Brian K. Walker, and I live a few miles down the road in Terravita. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. I've attended the neighborhood meeting and the two planning and zoning hearings in this very room regarding this application. This is my first time speaking. I felt it was very important for me to hear both sides before I interject my thoughts. Personally, I am recovering from opioid addiction and have two years of sobriety. I moved out west to Arizona two years ago when I met Mr. Prager. His passion to help others is extraordinary. He's a gentleman and more integrity in character than anyone I've ever met. With that said, it appears that some of the citizens feel threatened by having a group home facility here in Cave Creek, while others are worried about their property values being affected in a negative way, and some are even worried about their family's safety. Being a father, I have spent my whole life trying to protect and provide for my daughter. I understand and have compassion for the people of this community. I love Cave Creek. Being a New Yorker, it's a different side of the world for me. The truth is, folks, all these concerns are driven by fear and being misinformed. There is absolutely nothing to feel threatened or fear. First of all, I'm very certain having people staying at a group home where professionals like myself who want privacy to get well is no threat. This facility is not for young misguided individuals to live, who come and go as they please. Again, this is a group home for professionals like me who want peace and quiet and want to get well. The key word is "want." Ask yourself this question. Would you rather have Justin Bieber move in? I'm sure he'll have an effect on the traffic situation. Or maybe three teenage boys riding dirt bikes and shooting BB guns. I know if I was living next door, a quiet respectful neighbor is all that I would want. That's exactly what the Silverman estate will be. Lastly, most of us have heard group homes are allowed and protected by federal law. The Staff and Planning Commission of the town of Cave Creek have ensured that this group home will be regulated versus unregulated and licensed versus unlicensed. In fact, the town included 12 conditions to the special use application. Any reasonable and prudent person would acknowledge that the town could not have been more responsible in approving this application.
Three minutes.
Finishing up now. "There is no valid reason to delay this process any further. During the delay in the zoning process, the applicant's property has been vandalized, and the applicant's family has been harassed, and the faming letter with no return address and no signature was mailed to the applicant's employer. We as human beings act out because we are either fearful or misinformed. We are all God's children and all want the same things, to be happy, healthy, and live productive members of society. We respectfully request that the incumbents approve this application this evening. Thank you, and God bless."
Chad Bustos, please state your name and address for the record. Lisa Stewart, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm going to not speak tonight. I think the attorney did a fine job.
Katja Kinsel, please state your name and address for the record.
Katja Kinsel, 41200 North Echo Canyon Drive, Cave Creek. Let me read for you here the HUD Disability Rights in Housing. Definition of disability. Federal laws define a person with a disability as any person who has a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities, has a record of such impairment, or is regarded as having such an impairment. In general, a physical or mental impairment includes hearing, mobility, and visual impairments, chronic alcoholism, chronic mental illness, AIDS, AIDS-related complex, and mental retardation that substantially limits one or more major life activities. Major life activities include walking, talking, hearing, seeing, breathing, learning, performing manual tasks, and caring for oneself. Ms. Dukes has said that people in recovery are disabled. I asked Mr. Prager and the gentleman that just spoke, "Are you disabled? Are they considered disabled?" I feel the for-profit commercial group home, you can't deny it's a commercial, as the lawyer pointed out, Rose Law Group, it's commercial in a DR 190 zone. The commercial group home use proposed at this location is incompatible with the desert rural, low-density residential character and land use patterns prevailing in the surrounding neighborhood. Now, these are my husband's words, and you know, Mr. Sims, that he knows the right wording to use. It will adversely impact quality of life of residents living in this desert rural neighborhood. It will have an effect of devaluing surrounding properties, will require fundamental alteration of existing nondiscriminatory land use policies, and will not serve the public interest. I urge you to deny this request, or, as the lawyer has suggested, continue it until you find out more information. Thank you.
Good evening. Bruce Arland, Morningstar Road. I took a few notes. This is a very tough issue, indeed. My feeling first is that the residents should take precedence rather than a group home ultimately potentially taking precedence. By the way, people in recovery, it's a very difficult thing. Nobody doesn't want to see people get well. No question. Okay? The other thing I wanted to say is, the attorney this evening used the word essentially "disabled" all night. It may be law. Apparently, it's in our lexicon now, but I asked the question, "Are these patients in a medical facility, or are they people who are disabled?" The law says, emphasizes disability, which takes some sort of more powerful argument, supposedly. I don't know. I posed the question. This is really a medical facility for patients as I see it, but I could change my mind. People also say, I think the attorney said, "They come in sober." Firstly, I suppose people are tested. Do they stay sober, and what is the recovery rate? It's a question that came to mind. That never came up. The primary goal is to help people here, but we're really talking about zoning. I agree with the attorney there. We haven't really talked that much about what happens inside that place. Looks great. I'd like to go swimming there, for sure. So having said all of that, the neighbors' opinions take paramount urgency to me, at least to be heard. Therefore, I propose that you delay this action tonight, please. There's not enough information, apparently. We need some time to get a little bit more information to fine-tune the arguments, okay? Thank you.
Mitch Prager.
That was me, and I spoke, so I'll save time for the rebuttal session.
Good evening. Chris Spink, North First Street. I live over in Desert Hills area of unincorporated Phoenix, and I think this recovery center would be a good idea to have where Mitch wants it. For 15 years, I lived in Kirkland, Washington, a suburb of Seattle, and every day on my way to work and on the way home, I would drive by the Lakeside Mylum Recovery Center. It was about a quarter of a mile away from my house, and it was a non-issue. I just drove by. There was no pros or cons. They were just there. I never paid a whole lot of attention to it. I never really noticed it until the day came when I needed to go there for treatment of alcoholism. Then I was happy it was there. The people that I was in that treatment center with were no different than anybody in here tonight. We weren't in there causing problems. We had a problem that we were just trying to get help for. That treatment center helped me when I needed help, and that's why I think this is a good idea to have this treatment center here in the town of Cave Creek for the people that will need help. That's all I have.
Carrie Battles.
Hi. So I'm new to Cave Creek. We moved here in January. We looked for two years for a house that we loved. We live half a mile away. So when you take the emotion out of all of this, and it's hard to do it because it's a big deal to all of us here, I don't think anybody in this room is threatened by the people that will be staying in the facility. What it boils down to is, I don't want a business, a profit business, half a mile from my home. That's why I moved to Cave Creek. Spent a lot of money on our house. Spent a lot of money on it since we've been in there. I want to be a part of this community, but I don't want this business a half a mile from me. Doesn't have anything to do with disabilities, or who's threatened, or are they going to make it safe for us? Of course, with a $30,000 a month client, of course it's going to be safe for us. That's not the point. I don't want a business by my house. Thank you.[1612.59][1612.59][applause]
All right. At this stage of the game, we're back to council.
Get the outburst and ask for an opportunity to rebut.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say mister, but that ain't mister.
Thank you. I want to briefly address the timeline of these events. We have had three public hearings now. The application has remained virtually identical. The facts remain the same. The property's the same. We're maintaining 10 disabled residents. There's been no changes to this application. So when we received a letter from the opponent's legal counsel on July 11th, which is five days before today, we busted our butts to come up with a traffic impact study and also with arguments that address some of the concerns that they made, specifically that we didn't adequately address the special use criteria. So that's why I took the time to put those items in our letter and to go through that in our presentation today. I also want to mention that the conflict arose after we received the letter and I spoke with my client, and he mentioned that he had previously spoken with Rose Law Group prior to filing his application. So on July 12th, I contacted the Rose Law Group, informed them of the conflict. They researched it, called me back, and informed me that, yes, they indeed had a conflict, and asked me whether I'd be willing to waive or the client would be able to waive the conflict. They informed me that if we did not agree to waive the conflict, they would request a time extension of today's hearing. So I went back to my client. I discussed those options with him. So he agreed to waive the conflict. Verbally, I confirmed that with the Rose Law Group. A few hours later, I received a second phone call from them stating they were still going to request the continuance. So me bringing up this email today, I want to demonstrate to you that their initial opinion was that this group home was a protected use with a protected class of disabled residents that did not require a special use permit. And if Mitch did proceed with a special use permit application, the town would be required to grant it, and if they did not, the law would be on their side. I want to make that very clear today. We have been more than willing to work with the town in the conditions of approval that have come up with, you know, mutually by the Planning Commission, the staff, the applicant in this matter. We are supportive of those conditions, and we are supportive of following the town's processes. I just want to emphasize that no matter how many times the statement is made "commercial use," that does not make this use "commercial." We are a residential use. We are a residential use, providing housing for disabled residents. These residents live together, they cook meals together, they watch TV together, they sleep in rooms in the same home. I don't know how else to describe a residence or a residential use of property. Having a movie theater, having a spa in your home? I know, I know many individuals who have a movie theater or a spa in their home. Are we going to restrict those individuals from having those types of amenities in their homes, because that would constitute a commercial use? I don't think so. I also want to emphasize that Mitch describing this use as a boutique resort also does not transform the residential use into something other than, again, a residential use. He was trying to describe the quality of the property, and I showed that to you today with our photographs. Finally, the opponents are trying to use staff as a reason to deny this group home. And I addressed this briefly in our letter today, dated July 16th. There is case law which talks about that you cannot prevent a group home based on the presence of staff. Okay, here we go. It says, "The FHA case law has held that the act of distinguishing families from group facilities based on the presence of staff is a proxy for a classification based on the presence of individuals with handicaps, and cannot be used to justify disparate treatment." And I'm quoting the Sharp Visions case, and that's on page 13 of my July 16th letter. The reason why Mitch is requiring, or not requiring, but requesting 10 residents to live in this home is because it is recognized that disabled residents require services. I have described the care, the treatment, the counseling services that are going to be provided to these residents. That requires staff. It's mandated by state law, by our state regulations, that Mitch provide a certain number of staff at this home. To pay that staff, you have to have a certain number of individuals at the home to make it, to make it work. And so, you cannot penalize us for complying with state regulations, state licensing requirements. When a 10-person group home is a number that's recognized by your own building code, by other jurisdictions, so again, we would ask you that you not limit our residents to anything less than 10 persons. Finally, I don't know if I need to address this, but the people that are going to be living in this home are disabled. Persons recovering from drug addiction, from alcoholism, who are sober and recovering from those two addictions are recognized as disabled residents under federal law, under Arizona law, and it's set forth in that joint statement between HUD and the Justice Department that I submitted to you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What does ADHS say about numbers?
So, ADHS does not impose a maximum limit, per se, but they do have requirements where if you have more than 10 residents, you have to be licensed as a food establishment, meaning you have to go to the county, get a food, the kitchen facility has to be licensed. And so, Mitch is providing for 10 residents, so he does not require that food establishment licensed. With 10 residents, though, he is required to provide a clinical director, so he'll have an administrator of the property, and then a clinical director. And a clinical director is required when you provide 10 residents. So, to answer your question in a shorter way, the ADH regulations do contemplate 10 persons, but they don't necessarily provide a maximum limit.
Thank you. Any other questions for counsel? I'm not sure what we're doing now. Mr. Sims, would you care to give us any direction on this? I mean, we've got one side suggested, or should I let the gentleman from Rose come up and rebut, rebut the rebut?
Rebut to the rebut.
I never got a chance to speak on that form.
Did you give it to?
Yeah.
Might have been the way you said the name. Because she called out someone who didn't come up.
No, that wasn't.
Oh, okay.
If he still left the form.
Mitch Cooper.
I have a Mitch.
Yes, Mitch.
There's no last name, so.
Okay.
Yes, please. Right. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mitch Cooper, 829-8 East Wing Shadow Road, Scottsdale. We're looking to move into Cave Creek, and I understand a little bit about these facilities because my wife was actually an alcoholic, and I had to deal with a lot of that stuff personally. So, I did have to pay for her getting treatment. But, that being said, and I'm all for people with those needs. I love my wife, and we worked through it. And, and that's awesome, and I, you know, commend the gentleman who went through the program, but I don't think putting that in a residential community is a good thing for the residents around that area. Because unfortunately, and I don't label it that way because I needed it for my wife, but we went to an area that was not in a residential area, and I don't think putting that in a residential area is a good idea for the families that live there. I do think it does lower the property value. I do think that people don't have an understanding for the people that have problems. There is definitely a negative connotation with that, but that hurts everybody in the community. And so, if Mitch, the other Mitch, wants to have this facility, I would highly encourage him helping these people, but do it somewhere that's more a commercial location, and not in a residential. My question to every one of you is, would you want this facility next door to you? And if you, whichever way you feel, that's how they feel. So, I just want you to think about that, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
But she didn't speak. But she didn't speak.
I'm sorry, Kathy. We heard you. I know she called. You want to say the same thing all over again?
But you've already had your three minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, she spoke to it.
We're like the Supreme Court. We'll get back to you in six months.
Seriously, okay. Who thinks I should get?
People are raising their hands. I made it pretty clear, we fill out the forms, so. Bill?
I haven't spoke, and I mean, you had your three minutes.
So, you only get to speak for one agenda item?
You spoke on this agenda item.
Yeah, she did.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, would the gentleman from Rose like to rebut the rebut? That's where we're at now, folks.
I promise I'll be very brief. If I could just get that presentation up one more time, very quickly.
You gonna make us watch that again?
Not really. Almost there. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for tonight. I think you heard a very full and robust debate, and an interaction of ideas, and the issue before you tonight, which is what I said earlier tonight, it's a land use zoning case. What you see here tonight, in red, are all the residents who are opposed, who live directly around the property. The list of names are in addition to those people, and they have attended the Planning Commission both meetings, and they were here tonight. I think the residents of Cave Creek understand better than anyone else what is important and what is good for Cave Creek. Tonight, the applicant showed you ordinances from Phoenix and Scottsdale, but in all due respect, I have to say Cave Creek is not Phoenix, and it's not Scottsdale. So, I don't think the applicant has met the burden to earn a special use permit. I think they have failed to meet that burden tonight. I think you have seen that the residents of Cave Creek, after three full meetings, know this town better than anyone else, as opposed to a business from Phoenix, and I urge you to deny the application for a special use permit tonight. Thank you for your time.
Sir, you haven't said that. Let me ask you something about it.
Yep.
I mean, I'm looking at the letter that was from your firm.
Yep.
That says they can't actually require you to go through the use permit process based on laws, if that's successful.
I'm sorry, which email are you referring to?
The one that had the, was at the end of the other presentation. You know, basically, the guy that works for your, for your firm said that they didn't have to go through the permit, special use permit, and that they could go straight to state licensing.
Right, because he was under the impression that this application would be different than what it actually was in full form. He had not seen the application, he had not received full information. That's why I believe it's disingenuous to show an email which is informational at the very beginning, when he was under the impression it was one thing, when it was something else. He thought it was strictly a group home of probably six people, so he made certain assumptions. He didn't see a site plan, he didn't see anything in the application. So, it's impossible to have him judge on that email alone, which is purely informational, and then the applicant, as I understand it, went ahead and filed the application himself before he hired legal counsel. So, yes, are there, obviously, you can't violate federal housing authority standards, you can't violate the ADA, you can't break the law. But he didn't say to this guy, hey, you have a slam dunk, and this is going to be yours all the way. And as I said earlier tonight, he says, "The town may see it differently, and try to enforce their laws, or even deny the permit." So, he told this man, without the full knowledge of the facts of what this boutique hotel resort was going to be, and that would, I would believe, and I can't speak for him, but I believe he would have given him much different advice under those circumstances. So, it's very hard to take one email out of a thread that I don't even know how long it is, or all of the facts, but there's, he instructed me and told me that he did not know all of the facts of the application before it was filed.
Okay, well, another, another point in a previous email from two days before, it says, "Federal protections are very strong, so the town shouldn't be allowed to deny you having a facility where you want it unless there are too many others in the immediate vicinity," which obviously is not the case, so.
I'm going to repeat myself, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, but he was operating under one assumption of facts that did not bear out to be the facts that you're hearing tonight.
Makes perfect sense to me.
Okay.
Completely different scenario.
Yeah, and he's, I think he wants to rebut your rebuttal, standing behind you.
Okay.
Actually, he's sitting down. I think.
Are we going to go back and forth? I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what we're going to do here. We're just trying to get to the bottom of the whole thing, so. Mr. Prager?
Okay. I'll just make a quick point, that I, that Nick absolutely saw the application, read through the application, and be glad to share the emails with you. And Nick Labadi, who wrote the emails, did a great job. He tried to have me use that law firm, and then I spoke to some friends in Cave Creek, and they said, "He's with the Rose Law Firm. I don't recommend you do that." One more thing I'll point out. If someone is looking for a place to put a property.
What?
Let's look at the property. This is to the south. This is to the east. That's to the west. This is the property right here. So, where in Cave Creek, if there's going to be a home, where should it go?
Don't, don't, Mr. Prager, Mr. Prager, do not ask them questions, please.
Just want to point out Chuck and Ellen Rose, Chuck's in the room. Do you live in that neighborhood right there?
I do not, and I have never, ever indicated opposition to this. In fact, I've been in full support of this. So, that list is erroneous. That is not correct.
Oh.
Mine is on it, and I'm opposed.
Okay, that, Mr. Sims, I mean, obviously, we're back to counsel at this point in time. What is the appropriate thing for us to do? I mean.
Mayor, members of council, I have given you advice.
Talk into the microphone, will you?
Talk into the microphone. I've given you advice on a confidential basis. Let me first just give you the background. When I first talked to Ms. Dukes about this, she told me, as she said in the presentation today, that she believed Mitch had the right, without any approvals, and I disagreed. And I quoted to her a state statute that I thought gave you the power to impose some requirements. I must admit, your town code is sparse. Even the email that came from the Rose Law Group acknowledged that. It doesn't have a cap on the number of group homes, the number of individuals in a group home. It has very few specifics. And there are cities and towns across this state who are scrambling to meet the need by adopting an ordinance, which you've not yet done.
But we're scrambling, and we're still on the runway, though.
Well, and I think, I think we're headed in the right direction. I then attended a conference of about 250 lawyers and planners, and one of Tom's partners was there, and Ms. Dukes was there, although I'd never met Ms. Dukes. And during the course of that presentation, there was a panel on sober living establishments. And there was a question asked of the expert panel, "Can you impose any conditions?" And the unequivocal answer was no. I was speaking right thereafter, and we'd already negotiated conditions with Ms. Dukes. And so, I'd never met Ms. Dukes, and I said, "I understand the attorney for the applicant is here. Could she raise her hand?" She did. And I said, "Notwithstanding what was said in the prior discussion," because I went to the person who made that statement, and read to him the statute, I said, "I do believe we have the right to impose requirements, which are the 12 conditions you have here tonight that were approved by the zoning commission." She agreed. As I attended one of the commissions, I read the minutes in the other. When the framers of our constitution wrote the due process clause, they wrote it with you in mind. I was honored to listen to the planning commission as they wrestled with this difficult position. I am sobered by the varying views and emotions that are presented to you tonight. I respect all of you for the decision you have to make, because it's not easy. The due process clause allows you, and the planning and zoning commission, to make a decision regarding your neighbor's property rights, to make a decision that will affect their property rights. And that's why there's such emotion tonight, and that's why we have such specificity. That's why your planning and zoning commission went to great lengths, to give you a recommendation that was unanimous. That's why we have warring memos upwards of 50 and 60 pages. I don't envy the decision you have to make. I do know that other cities across the state are attempting to make similar decisions, and have believed they can impose requirements. I believe what you're doing here tonight is assuming, the critical question for you tonight are the six factors met. The six factors of your special use permit, that's all you have, because your code is terrible. It doesn't have anything else. You have to sit down and make a decision as to whether or not those conditions have been satisfied. Reasonable men and women can differ. After all, some of the very same people in the Rose Law Group differ, and so you can reach different conclusions. But that doesn't mean you can't and won't, and you must make a decision. Now, I've given you advice in private. If you wish, we could, we could recess this to go into each session, if you wish, and I could continue your advice, or it's up to you if you want me to continue.
I would prefer continuing.
I would prefer continuing also.
Before we do that, could you read the SUPs? What they are, what the stipulations are?
They're the six, they're the six.
The six that we're just.
They're the six that, we're lawyers. They're the six factors that have been identified. And they're fairly, they're fairly generic. And you can look at it, and you said it well, Councilman Planzey, what's, you have two different views, and you have to make a decision. But that's where a failure to make a decision could have negative consequences, that I'd like to either brief you in each session, or you advise, ask me to brief you now.
I would prefer now.
No.
I would second the mayor. I'd prefer now to hear.
I'd like to know, I think, I need to know, does the majority of council wish for me to continue the advice?
Yes. But I think that we probably should leave the room instead of asking these folks to please file out.
Well, I mean, I mean, I'm talking about having, right now, just in front of everybody.
Oh.
A public, public discussion.
Okay.
With the public here, of course.
Here's the issue. Section 9-539 was drafted at the time when vacation rentals were stringing up all over the state. I know, because I'm the Jerome Town Attorney, and the Goldwater Institute beat me up. I know, because I'm the Jerome Town Attorney, and the Goldwater Institute beat me up. And they drafted this legislation to, in effect, prohibit cities and towns from regulating short-term rentals. At the time, Prescott had 200 sober, in this case, structured sober living homes. The city attorney there caused the legislature to include in this statute structured living homes as examples of short-term rentals. And so that allowed Prescott to impose restrictions, not just on the short-term rentals that are now the subject of the new statute, that are not Mitch's. It's structured sober living homes that include sober living homes that include medical care. On August 3, this statute changes. On August 3, the kinds of facilities, behavioral health, let me get it right, behavioral health residential facilities, are no longer sober living homes. On August 3, you lose absolutely all power to control them. So I read this statute to Ms. Dukes. I said, "This statute applies. I need conditions." And we got the 12 conditions. Those 12 conditions are meant to let experts at ADHS control that facility. Those 12 conditions are meant to invite a dialogue between your staff and ADHS to make sure your community is protected. Those 12 conditions, because when you read, if you listen to the expert at the seminar, they said we weren't even entitled to any. And I said, "No, I think we are." But we are only allowed those conditions for about two more weeks. In about two more weeks, we lose all power. And so my view is, you ought to do as follows. My recommendation is to follow the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission. It was a unanimous recommendation. They believe the six factors there have been satisfied. You have the right to disagree. If you don't think that any of those six are satisfied, then you reject this. But know full well that if you do reject it, we have to come back and try to cobble something together before you lose the right to impose the requirements.
Which is August 3.
August 3. Having said that, I mean, this is not an easy choice. And my view is, is that we implement this now, then I think we direct staff to follow the model of the other jurisdictions across the state and adopt an ordinance that will apply not just to the sober living homes that are not Mitch's. I talked to ADHS today. They are befuddled, because the kinds of behavioral health residential facilities are not even covered by this statute. And they will continue. But what we need to do is, we need to adopt an ordinance that does exactly what Mason has done, Phoenix has done, Prescott has done, for the new sober living homes, but apply it also to the behavioral health facilities, so we can get some of the 12 conditions that Mitch has agreed to here. It is not a perfect solution. That is the problem with the due process clause. Our government decided to make a policy decision to protect the interest of the disabled and to get them out of institutions. It just so happened that this residence was chosen. And now that is a problem, I know, for the neighbors. But the due process clause puts the burden on you to make a decision if those six have been satisfied. And if so, my recommendation is, is to follow the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission with one exception. I've heard Ms. Dukes say many times, it would be capped at 10. Currently, six says currently, a 10, meaning it could increase. Would it be possible to change stipulation six, so the number would not exceed 10? Is that possible? And that's a question.
Mayor. Yes.
At this juncture, there may be many people out here that don't know what these 12 stipulations are.
They're right up there.
Well, the 12, yeah, but to read them. I think in six, the one I have says, "And the number of clients shall not exceed the number authorized by state licensure currently at 10." But you're saying...
Currently, sure.
At 10.
Maybe you ought to put the 12 up, so the citizens can see the 12.
Somebody in the back wants to ask one quick question. It's not really...
Go to you, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Are you asking for an answer?
Wendy Carey-Chuck, 40577 North Cave Creek. How are you, Mayor? My question is, this sounds like an expensive facility, and they're already concerned about the numbers adding up to be able to pay for it. Should this facility go out of business, then what happens to the property? Can a caveat be put in place that returns it?
It is. They volunteered that.
That is already set in place, that it returns to residential, should this go bankrupt?
It goes away.
And it can't be sold? It has to stay with the original? Or is that part of it?
Read that one. Read that one.
Uh... Which number is it?
It does not go with the land. It goes with his license, as stated earlier.
Thank you.
Once again, I'd repeat myself, if I may, for Attorney Sims, that we have that in place. And if approved tonight, it's applicable, and it would run with the individual, not the land.
Right.
Come August 3, the new legislation that goes in place, you can take this and tear it up and throw it away.
That's what it said.
Because there would be no stipulations, and your concern then would be a valid one.
And worse, your code says it does run with the land.
Yes, yes, it does.
Your code requires it to run with the land.
Right.
Mayor.
Mr. Sims, is there not an option to move to continue this for, before August 3, whatever day, 60 days, and get adoption of an ordinance that would, or get it made and get it in there, so we have something that's valid with information?
It takes 30 days after passage.
We can't. Councilman Wright, the ordinance would take 30 days to be effective.
And how many days do we have? Two weeks?
Less than three weeks, two and a half weeks.
But my job is to advise all of you. I mean, truly, you wish, the majority of council wants to do that.
Well, no.
You'd have to continue it, but we need to have the session before August 3, so we have the requirements, that if you decide, if the majority of council wants to do that.
Correct. So we could do that.
But you can't do an ordinance, because an ordinance takes two readings and is not effective for 30 days.
So we could have the conditions. I mean, the stipulations, is that what you're saying? Add to them? Add to them, so we can continue it, so we get back, get more information, get this, because it's very convoluted now, and it's, we're not doing a good job at all. We're not protecting our residents at all.
Okay. Let me just interject here. The opposite side of that is, if we decide that we want to put more stipulations on the applicant, where he has already agreed to a dozen of them, and he decides he doesn't want those stipulations, he simply needs to withdraw his application on August 3. He does whatever he wants to. It's a pretty simple solution.
We have six beds, not 10.
No.
No.
No, it's 10.
10.
Can I? No. Mayor?
The definition of group home isn't even capped. The 10 is an ability to limit it to 10. We haven't heard yet if that's agreed yet.
It's already limited.
Why can't we... Why can't we table this until...
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, Councilwoman Clancy?
One of the things I think we ought to consider is the gentleman who have hired Rose Law Firm, and someone made a disparaging remark about Rose Law Firm, and they got a lot of great lawyers over there. But given a few of the things that you all brought up, would there be the ability to look at some of them if we feel that they're... And would you, at this point, for example, no firearms in the home?
I'll tell you that no patient and no guest would ever have a firearm. Based on what's happened with the harassment and the vandalism to my property over the last few weeks, I will have a security consultant answer my question at a later date. But no patient, or no guest, or no resident would ever have any kind of weapon.
So you're saying you might have a security guard?
I will have a security...
You will have a security, and I know they will probably have a firearm. I don't know if there is something that we're...
I'm more worried about the safety of my, based on the behavioral last few weeks. Okay.
Look at how safe this is ready to be coming. Yeah, this is great for the community. This is great.
You're, so you're saying that you're going to hire security people, armed security people, to protect your, to protect your property? That's supposed to be in a peaceful neighborhood.
No, I'm saying that I will...
Mayor Bunch, I'd like to make a motion, please, that we table this agenda item and as quickly as we can work on some, adopt some more. Let's study it some more. Let's work on it. Let's get the details. It's convoluted. We are making a mess of it.
I strongly second that. Strongly.
Okay. All of those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Let's do it. Let's do a voice count.
Mayor, are you continuing to a date certain?
I think we need, not table, we need to continue.
Okay, continue.
You've got to take a step to take it off the table.
Okay, continue.
So it needs to continue, and it needs to be continued prior to August 3.
Okay. So I move to do that, to continue it prior, okay.
And I second that.
Councilwoman Wright?
Yes.
Councilwoman Elrod?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silva?
No.
Councilwoman Smith?
No.
Councilwoman Clancy?
No.
Mayor Bunch?
No. Two to four, motion fails.
Could we get the applicant's response?
Yeah, could we please get the response to the 10?
Yes, thank you. We have spoken with our client, and he will agree to a maximum number of residents of 10.
Okay. Well, that's something.
May I comment?
You should be ashamed of yourselves.
May I comment now?
Yes, please.
You should be ashamed.
It's a relatively easy change. There's already a requirement...
You're welcome.
There's already a requirement for licensure in number two. All that needs to be done with number six is the maximum number of clients that could be housed at this facility shall not exceed 10. Eliminate the rest of the...
That would take care of it.
May I say, may I say something?
Go right ahead.
I have a lot of friends that I call neighbors that live in this area, and I am very, I, my heart goes out to you on this matter.
You know, we're not going to do this.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
You may.
I make a motion to approve case number SU 18-01, Silverman's Estate Special Use to Allow a Group Home for a Proposed State-L licensed Behavioral Health Residential Facility, Subject to Conditions Attached in Exhibit A, or I'm sorry, J. And I just want to point out that under Exhibit J, number six will read, "The maximum number of clients that can be housed at the facility shall not exceed 10," period. The rest of that will be stricken.
Vice Mayor, you had the motion?
I think I said my opening comments are still applicable as my closing arguments. I've read hundreds and hundreds of pages of documentation over the last several weeks. I've talked to the attorneys on all sides of this. I've talked to people in town, and I think to move forward, to have Exhibit J with 12 stipulations, is far better than waiting two and a half weeks whereby the town, the residents, will have no protection, no guarantees. So I support it.
Mayor.
Councilman Smith, you had the second.
The reason I seconded this is because I have a great belief in the way that this planning commission has done its job. They heard everything. They deliberated. They went to incredible detail. And as Vice Mayor Silva said, we've all read an incredible amount of material on this. We know that there's always the potential of suits, and we'll have to live with that if that happens. But legally, and I always believe in following the law, I don't think there's an alternative to saying yes to this.
Councilwoman Wright?
No matter how you look at this, this is a commercial business in a residential neighborhood. If they are paying $30,000 a month to sleep in the same house with people, this is a commercial business. And to me, residents come first, period, so...
Good for you.
No.
I, I agree wholeheartedly. The residents that live there, that have put their life savings, that worked hard to live in this community, should be considered first and foremost.
Good for you. The mayor did agree with you.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Well, it's a very difficult decision, and it is because that the planning committee did such an excellent job of having multiple, multiple, multiple meetings and having this aired out for it to come down to the fact that August 3 has nothing to do with it, to some degree, because there'll be nothing. But even prior to that, there are laws that are actually not withholding him from doing it, without even going through this process, not even coming to any of these stipulations. Again, I think one of the most important areas for me was that the SUP did not go with the land. The last thing that any community needs is for something to happen, this not to work out, and then somebody comes out, somebody else comes in and doubles it or triples it, and it doesn't go back to commercial. This will go back to commercial, which is critical for the residential. I'm sorry, residential. It's just that we have spent, some of us, long periods of time reading these documents over and over and over again. And I attended just about every meeting, except for one, that the commission had. So it was a, this is a push come to shove, there'll be maybe a continuing lawsuit, much of what others have said, but for us who fully understand how this is going to work, we're pretty much forced into making a decision which requires a yes. So mine's a yes as well.
This was a zoning issue.
No, actually, it's not. I wish it were.
I would, I would say that were this facility being proposed for next door to me, I would be apprehensive as well. This is one of those rock and a hard place decisions that unfortunately we occasionally have to make because they're brought to us. I know that there's a possibility that the folks that live in the neighborhood will retain someone and try and stop this action from happening, and that's your right to do that. I also know that we've got a lot tougher road to go down if we violate federal housing laws or the ADA laws. I know that that's not going to, not going to bode well for us, because with all of the examples that have been given here, I do believe that we're making the only decision we can logically make for the entire community, and that's the one that is legal. The decisions were made far above our, above our pay grades. I don't, I don't like being forced by the federal government to do that, but unfortunately, that is, it is what it is, and I think we're ready for a vote. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on this one.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright?
No.
Councilwoman Elrod?
Absolutely not.
Vice Mayor Silva?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Bunch?
Concludes our, that concludes our meeting for the evening. All those... Motion to adjourn? So moved.